In commission order, we will begin with the pledge of allegiance. If you would please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Whittington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Approval of the agenda is there motion related to this evening's agenda?
Move to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion has been made to approve the agenda we have this evening. Any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Next is public comments. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on any items this evening? Seeing no one for public comments, that moves us to our immediate action agenda. We have two items under immediate action. Administrator?
Yes, two items under immediate action. Resolution 2023-65 is a proven agreement between the Office of Administration with the State of Missouri and County of Clay and County of Jackson County for fiscal year 2023. And just a little bit of information on this, this is actually renewing an interlocal agreement that was passed by the commission last year in 2022. The state gave $300,000 in their budget to do a study of the Buck O'Neil Bridge, the older bridge, with regard to pedestrian space, possibly a pedestrian park. And so as part of that agreement to receive those funds, the state asked for an interlocal agreement between Clay County, Jackson County, and actually Kansas City, Missouri is also involved in this project. It commits no county funds for this study, nor does it obligate the county in the future for any costs. Unfortunately, due to timing, it ended the state's budget, and so they need to reappropriate the $300,000 for the project. And so they have asked all the agencies to renew the interlocal government agreement. And so that's before you this evening to approve. All the other agencies have already approved and renewed this. The second item on the immediate action agenda is Resolution 2023-66, which is approving an invoice payment for Clay County for the period of February 10th through February 16th. There were 256 invoices for a total amount of $559,504.87.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on any of the items on the immediate action agenda? Commissioner Whittington.
Hey, so who gets the, who's getting the money for the?
Could you speak a little more into your mic?
Who's getting the money for the Buck O'Neil Bridge? Like what entity does that money going to?
The $300,000 for the study. Kansas City, Missouri has taken the lead on that project. As part of the agreement, we were part of the selection process to help review engineering firms that is doing the study, but Kansas City is the lead agency on this.
Where are they at in the process?
I know that the, the firm has been selected and Kip Jones was actually the county's representative on that project, and they selected Burns and Mack on that project, but I don't have the status on whether it's completed or not.
So they've already done the work? This is just renewing the contract?
This is just renewing the interlocal agreement, correct?
Okay, yeah.
If they've not completed it, the work is underway.
Okay, yeah, I think it's a good idea. I think it would be a game changer for the Harlem and North Kansas City area, so I'm in favor of it.
The only question I have is?
Commissioner Lawson, go ahead.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay.
The only question I had was that the, I noticed when I read the document that, that if these funds aren't properly used, we got to pay them back. So we're not in total control of that money. I, you know, that, I have a concern about that as well. And, and you know, to be perfectly frank, yeah, maybe some people in North Kansas City will go, how much is this going to serve Clay County? I, I can't think that on an afternoon I say, let's go down and play on the bridge. I just really feel, you know, we have to be very cautious in signing this thing because we're responsible for this $300,000, and I don't think we've got a major control factor in it. If we do, I'd sure like somebody to explain it to me.
Mr. Counselor? You appear to be looking through papers. I assume you're?
Again, this is something that we looked at probably past over a year ago, as I recall. These are state funds that are being allocated for this purpose, right? There are no county funds being expended, as I recall.
It's largely, the thing is, the, the funds were not really quite given, that's probably not quite the right way, but they were allocated to the counties. The counties then signed an agreement that it went to the city of Kansas City. My understanding was that Kansas City also assumed the liability as far as whether or not they are properly expended.
That, that's my, that's my recollection as well.
Not unlike the, the, not the ARPA, what was the one before the ARPA funding?
CARES.
Thank you, yes. CARES Act funding. Our agreements with CARES Act funding recipients, this is for your time, Administrator, had the caveat that I rather insist to get put in there, that if there were, if they were any errors, it would be on the part of the recipient, and they would be directly responsible for those payments.
And I think the, the language you're referring to, Commissioner, is if we don't use the funds for the purpose intended, which I think that would always be the case. I mean, if we use the funds at our county airport, I'm not sure how we actually pull that off, but if we did, we'd have to pay it back. So as long as it's being used for the purpose that is intended and allocated for, then, then we certainly have no liability. And, and to be honest, I believe all of this will go to Burns and Mack, is my belief, which again, won't cause a problem on our end.
Yeah, it, it says each recipient may invoice OA, which is Office of Administration, I guess, for $150,000 on or after the effective date of this agreement. Alternatively, payment of $300,000 may be made to one recipient with written agreement by the other recipients and documentation showing that the study is being conducted jointly. So, but it also says in here, if the costs, that this isn't gone, isn't put properly for what it's supposed to be put for, then anything, or it does it halfway and then something's dropped, we have to, we, Clay County, have to pay this back. So, and now not in total, I'm sure we'd have to share that cost with, with the other county and the city, but I, I don't.
I also think my recollection, at least at one point on this, was that we were going to have it all go to Jackson County as the recipient, which is permissible, and then they would, to be honest, be on the hook at that point, is my, my reading.
And it says, it is right, you're right.
Yeah.
You're right.
That's my belief.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we pay you the big bucks for.
The intention is, you know, it was allocated for both counties.
Uh huh.
And, and, you know, obviously it's not involving, you know, county funds. We, we are okay with it as long as Jackson County takes the lead, and, you know, we essentially have no major role in oversight or liability, and I think that's what this does.
Well, and you're, you're right to some degree, but we, we will be responsible, were they not to do it properly? We, we'll have to pay, we have to pay it back, it says it.
I don't think that's right. I think it says, if we, we, we are, if, if we allow Jackson County to be the recipient, the, paragraph four says the recipient who mishandles the funds has to pay it back. And so in that situation, we would not be the recipient because we wouldn't, we won't be touching the funds if we, if we handle it that way.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm going to go on record, I want somebody to remember this, put it back in your memory banks. If we end up having to pay, then are you going to pay that money out of your salary?
I'm sure we will be fine.
Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you very much. If I may, in my role that may end somewhat soon, as a member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for Kansas City, Missouri, we actually took a, a great look at this because that's actually on one of our boulevards in Kansas City, Missouri. It is my understanding that through a lot of lobbying by the city of Kansas City, as well as the downtown council, they asked Senator Greg Eraser to take up this matter, and I, from my understanding, it is his hard work that got us to these dollars that we're talking about this evening. I believe it was his intention to involve both Clay and Jackson Counties because the bridge goes to both. And so my, my belief is that should there be any issue, the senator will be the first to know, and if he has any sort of problems with either county, he will do a wonderful job in communicating whatever that issue happens to be. What I do know from the preliminaries is if you would want to save that bridge for whatever purpose you wanted, someone has to come up with the first $50 million to actually make it usable, and I'm hopeful that, that Burns and Mack can figure out who gets to pay for that one. But I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Further questions or comments on immediate action items? Seeing none? I believe there was a motion?
Not yet, but I'll make one.
Is there a motion on our immediate action?
Move to approve items on immediate action.
Motion has been made to approve the items under immediate action on today's agenda? Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
No.
That brings us to this evening's con- Oh, I'm sorry, you are right, this immediate action, so it does require you, so we would need to take those up now as?
So I would suggest that, so if Commissioner Lawson is okay with 66, that we take up 66 as immediate action, that we then, that we make a motion to put 2023-65 on the work session next week.
Yeah, let me start with?
So, so two different questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Right to motion.
Why don't I start with the second one? Move to approve for immediate action 2023-66.
Motion has been made to approve immediate action 2023-66. Further discussion? Commissioner Lawson? Did you, did you have any comments? Very good. Okay, a motion been made to approve 2023-66 under immediate action. No further discussion, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Very good. That brings us to, I think there's a motion wanting to be made for 2023-65.
I move that 2023-65 be placed on next week's regular agenda.
Motion has been made to put 2023-65 on next week's work agenda? Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Very good. That brings us to our consent agenda. We have one item under our consent agenda. Administrator?
On consent agenda is Resolution 2023-64, which is approval of service orders for private internet services with Unite Private Networks LLC. Staff presented on this last week, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of the Administrator? Seeing none? Just as a reminder, of course, any item on consent agenda, any member can move to have it put on regular agenda. I don't see any motion towards that. Is there a motion related to the consent agenda?
Move to approve 2023-64.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-64 under our consent agenda. Further discussion? Seeing none? You are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Now it comes to our regular agenda. We have one item under our regular agenda, that would be 2023-67. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-67 is the approval of invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office from February 10th to February 16th. There were four invoices totaling $1,850.19.
Any questions? Yes?
Move to approve 2023-67.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-67. Further discussion? Seeing none? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
I'll accuse myself.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
That concludes that regular agenda. That brings us to discussion items. We have three items under discussion. Please go ahead and start with the first one, Administrator.
The first item is really just to provide an update on our property and casualty insurance renewal. I'd like to introduce Risk Manager Christine Poles, who will talk briefly, and then introduce our guest speaker from CBiz.
Please proceed.
Good evening, Commissioners, Christine Poles, Risk Manager. Thank you for having me this evening. We wanted to talk to you about our insurance policy for property and casualty is expiring in March, and our insurance broker, CBiz, has been working on the county's behalf to put together a renewal proposal. In advance of the proposal being presented to the commission, we wanted to invite CBiz to talk with the commission and provide information that they're seeing generally on the state of public entity insurance climate, the trends that they're saying with, seeing with renewals, as well as just some general information. So with that, I will turn it over to Tom McGuire.
Good evening. Just wanted to give some, just brief information about what to expect with the upcoming renewal that's coming up in March. The public entity property and casualty market has been hardening over the past three to four years, meaning pricing has been increasing due to a number of factors. One of the main factors is just the fact that there is becoming fewer carriers that are willing to write insurance for municipalities in general. If you would rewind to about 18 months ago, we had Travelers, who is our current carrier. We had a carrier called One Beacon and a carrier called Brit that were all competing against one another. One Beacon and Brit merged and became One Carrier and have since pulled out of the marketplace. So that really leaves us with limited options in terms of securing insurance, especially as we get to entities the size of Clay County. With that being said, some of the reasons that are driving, you know, this increase in pricing and the hardening of the market is nothing that is going to probably shock anyone as we, as we see litigations from law enforcement countrywide. Unfortunately for us, insurance is, is the quintessential law of large numbers, and so we get grouped in with everyone countrywide, whether we're having the claims or not, and that's what's driving the marketplace. So although we're seeing some steadying on the casualty lines, think everything from a liability standpoint, the big change that we're going to see is going to come on the property side. And, and this is being driven by property claims really worldwide, but if you can even, you know, pinpoint things from just in the United States. So if you think of wildfires in California, hurricanes in, on the Gulf Coast, wind and hail claims throughout the Midwest have become more prevalent. In 2022, we had 19 individual claims in the United States that totaled over a billion dollars on the property line. And so what carriers have done, and this is happening whether you're in the public space, public entity space, it's even trickling over into the private sector, if, if any of you have, deal with that, is the carriers are really increasing property deductibles. And so that's the thing that I really wanted to kind of hone in on tonight so that you're not surprised when, when we come with the proposal. Carriers have become hesitant to want to cover roofs as, as it relates to wind and hail. And so how they're getting, how they're mitigating that from their standpoint, because the property line has been unprofitable for them for the past, you know, five to 10 years, really, is they're really increasing just the deductibles on the wind and hail. So what we would expect to see in the renewal would be the travelers moving to what's called a percentage wind and hail deductible, and that means a percentage of the building. So you're going to have a, see a separate deductible for just wind and hail claims. And so what we would expect to see would be like a 1% wind and hail, but that is per building, and it's off of the total value of the building, not the actual claim dollar amount. So for instance, I just, as an example, if you had the administrative building here, that would equate to the deductible being just for this building, almost $110,000. The kicker to that is the deductible stack. So if we get multiple buildings hit, they just add them up. So we don't have, the minimum that they're going to probably do is 100,000, but you could be getting into, if multiple buildings were hit, they just add up, and you pay an, an individual deductible per building. We have seen, so to take a quick step back, all we do at CBiz on my team, for all intents and purposes, is public entity insurance. We insure about 70 in the Kansas City region. So this has been a common factor. It started in the school districts and has now bled over into the cities and counties. So, you know, we are confident that that's probably what we will see. There are certain cases where you can still get a flat deductible on your wind and hail, but the carriers are pricing that to a point that it, it makes no fiscal sense to, to do it. The other factor on that is, you know, as we can risk manage law enforcement liability or employment practices liability or our auto, and, and, you know, help to drive those claims down, we can't do that with weather. So we're kind of at the mercy of whether or not a storm, you know, blows through Clay County and affects any of the buildings. So that, that's probably going to be the main difference you're going to see with the renewal coming up this year, is that we will be forced, for lack of a better term, to go to that percentage wind and hail deductible. But I'll, you know, obviously can answer any questions that you might have at this point.
Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation and visiting with us this evening. What does that mean from a premium standpoint then, for us?
Yeah, great question. So theoretically, you would think, all right, we're, we're getting a deductible moved up that's taking out one of the biggest exposures for an insurance carrier, so we're going to see a huge premium reduction. That's not necessarily the case. Although we're not expecting to see anything crazy from a premium standpoint for this particular renewal, the carriers are not increasing that deductible and then really lowering the rate a lot. So, you know, we wouldn't expect to see that on, on this renewal either. A local, a contemporary of yours on the Kansas side, and Kansas is a little bit worse than Missouri, got moved to a percentage wind and hail deductible and still got a little bit of a rate increase, and that was for a renewal that's happening about the same time as yours. So although, although the deductible's going up, we wouldn't expect a, a rate relief from that.
But, but we wouldn't see a commensurate increase in the premium?
No, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? Is there any comment from staff in addition to what we've had?
Just for Commissioners' awareness, we will have this back on your agenda next week with actually premiums and do a comparison for you. And we, we've had some discussion about this, and so in essence, what they're going to be forcing entities to do is really almost self-fund, right, for, for roof replacements. Now luckily, as we all know, many times you'll have roof damage, but you don't have to completely replace the entire roof, but our deductibles are going to be so substantial that the cost is going to be 100% of the counties. And as a county, we're in a little bit better shape than some cities because our properties, our buildings are spread out across the county, except for right here in this particular area, and these are probably our most expensive buildings when you have this building, Rooney Justice Center, and the detention facility. And so, you know, but we've all seen storms not be on one side of the street, not on the other side of the street, but this is probably our most major exposure. So one of the things we'll be talking about is how do we take whatever savings we have from premiums and start setting that aside, sort of build up a reserve so that we can self-fund when those instances happen for us, that we can cover those costs. But more to come next week when it comes to actually seeing the premiums and how do we start building for the future.
Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you, and, and Administrator, I appreciate you basically describing it the way that you did, because my initial reaction was, if there was an increase in the premium, would you, would it be favorable for us to consider just self-insuring on, on those roofs? And, and what I'm hearing is the strategy is probably take your savings from your premium or whatever and put it over here, but I guess, is there, is there even a thought of just avoiding the premium entirely, throwing it in to a fund and just self-insuring?
Well, and, and you've got the numbers probably ahead of you, but the premiums for that would not be substantial enough to do that.
I see.
And just one other point on that. We, we have actually explored that for other entities leading up to this, where we'll say, okay, certain buildings are of such value that, you know, we are completely self-insuring. Can we pick and choose which ones we want to have the wind and hail on? Can we exclude it altogether? The feedback that we've gotten from the markets is that because they're regulated by the state and they have to file rates, we can't pick and choose or just completely move off the, the wind and hail coverage, so we're kind of stuck with what, what they give us. But that's a really good question, because, and we have explored that.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, I'm just curious, what are the other cities and counties doing with this issue?
Our experience with our other entities that are, have faced this up to this point are, you know, trying to set aside funds for, in case that there is a storm. You know, like we were talking about just a few seconds ago, this started with school districts because they have a huge amount of buildings in a very, very tight area. And so that happened probably two or three years ago, and now it's spilled over. But yes, the, the, the general rule has been to try to set aside some, say, some of the savings that you might get from a premium standpoint into some sort of fund in case that, in case that occurs. It's, no doubt though, it's problematic for, you know, entities that are working on a fixed budget and can't just raise prices or whatever to get more revenue.
And sorry, giving a preview for next week with premiums, but our premiums are estimated to be slightly below what this year's premiums were. And in addition to that, we also, in the budget, actually budgeted an increase in those premiums. So there will be a delta there, and that will be, our recommendation is to take that delta and set it aside and start building that reserve for a future wind damage.
Further discussion? Seeing none, unless there's anything else to be added, we will go ahead and close this discussion and move on to the next one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second item? Administrator?
The next item is an update on the financial statement, which we had some discussion about that last week, and I think you'll be well pleased to hear an update from the county counselor.
Yeah, thank you. I, I mentioned last week when we talked about this, this is the 50.815 requirement that each of you review every, every expenditure, every receipt and certify to those. I mentioned last week that I'd had conversations and messages in to the legal counsel for the state auditor's office about this very issue. The good news is that I think the next day, I had fairly long conversations and written emails back and forth with the auditor's office legal counsel. Their interpretation is that a first-class charter constitution county does not need to comply with this provision, which I think is fantastic for us. Not only do we not, we don't need to do, as far, I think my reading is, we don't have to do the financial statement at all, publish it, and you don't have to certify to it. So. So everyone who is planning on spending hours going through these here in the next couple of weeks, unless, I guess you still can, but you don't need to.
I already started.
Well, we, we did it as early as we could. I didn't want to shut everybody down. I found out last, like Wednesday or Thursday last week, and let's put it back on immediately. So, so any questions on that? But otherwise, it looks like we are not going to have to do that.
All right, very good. That's good news. I was also kind of thinking about how I was going to work that in. I wish I'd had, had come up with that a couple of years ago, it saved myself some time.
I was trying to do 25, 50 days a day.
I'm sorry?
I was trying to do 25, 50 days a day.
It is, it is a ponderous task. Well, anyway, very good. Thank you very, is there any question or comment for the councillor on this? All right. We should have become a, we should have become a constitutional county a long time ago. That brings us to our third item, Administrator?
Yes, so the third item for discussion is discussion of Chapter 30, Article 1, Division 2 of the municipal code, sessions of the county commission. And so there was a lot of discussion, I think, over the last several meetings about how do the commission, how does the commission want to proceed in conducting business and with regard to this particular ordinance about items on first reading, items on second reading? And so this is on for certainly a, a discussion for the commission to give us some guidance on, on what you're looking for. I do have a little bit of information that I've kind of put together. Again, this is just information out there for commission to kind of talk over, add to, take away, come up with something completely different. So with that, I'm going to go through just these slides very briefly. And so I think there's been some discussion by commissioners of, well, why do we have a business session? Why do we have a work session? Why can't we simply just have a commission meeting and conduct business in different categories? And certainly that is an option for the commission if that's something that you would choose to do. So I put together sort of definitions of different categories of agendas that could be on your agenda. And some of them we already do. So the consent agenda is one, which we had this evening, so, which is pretty typical of governmental agency on their agenda is to have a consent agenda. And so the items that go on a consent agenda certainly allow the commission to approve routine items of business in one motion. And typically in those items, there's no discussion, there's no presentation, information is in the packet, and then the commissioner, any commissioner can remove something from the consent agenda. And then the revised consent agenda can be approved in one motion. And then you take the item that was removed by a commissioner up and deal with that particular item individually. And so there are reasons to do that. For example, one would be if a commissioner did not want to vote in favor of a particular item, a little bit what we saw tonight, then that's the opportunity, everything else on the consent can be approved in one motion. And then discussion can happen on the item. If there's a no vote on that item that was removed, then it goes to the second meeting for a second reading. The other reason that a commissioner may want to remove something off a consent agenda is not that you're not going to vote no, but you may have some questions or you want to have a presentation by staff. And so you would remove it and then the motion would happen. If it passes unanimously, then it passes, and if not, then it goes to the next meeting. The second category of agenda items are basically immediate agenda, which we've also had and have utilized recently. And so those are items also that we would think would be approved at that meeting, the first reading meeting. The difference between consent and immediate is on, anything on the immediate agenda item is taken up individually. There is a presentation before that you would take a vote. So it's a little bit different. This is typically where you've seen us start putting the planning and zoning items that you all discussed, that you felt comfortable of approving the night that they're introduced. But we also, you felt like you wanted to have a presentation by staff for the public before you took it up and voted. And then, you know, again, has to pass unanimously. If it doesn't, then it goes on to the next meeting. The third category is regular agenda, which you're certainly very familiar with. These are items that would come on, on first reading, and then they could be disposed of, but generally those are ones that are typically moved on to the second meeting. And then certainly always having opportunity for discussion items like we're having this evening, where there's no action really required, but it's where staff is giving a more in-depth presentation or the commission is doing items for discussion. So the last slide, just to kind of give you, had a, we tried to, from discussion with commissioners and with staff, kind of came up with categories or topics, and then we kind of gave you ideas of where it could or might fit. And you'll notice that some of these topics could be in multiple different agenda categories, depending on circumstances. So for example, event license or like special events. And so you see, we said, well, it could be on consent or you might want to consider it on immediate. If it is an event item that we have done historically, year after year, there's no significant changes. And you saw that last week when there was the disc golf event that we've done for numerous years. There was no substantial change in the application. It's pretty much the same we've done year after year. So that one, you might want to consider, that could be something that could be put on consent. However, if we have a new event, like the last year when Guttit came and wanted to host a new event in our parks, you know, then that might go on immediate action because there could be a staff presentation, you could get information from the applicant, and you could then, if you're in favor of it, approve it that night. And then the applicant has their, their license to move forward. So it kind of depends. It also could be an event that we've done year after year, but in the application, they've asked because they want to grow it, it's substantially changed. And so we would, as staff, we might put that on immediate agenda just because we want to make sure you're aware that the, the event has grown and they've asked for more of the park or whatever those changes might be. Term and supply contracts, you've seen those. We've typically, those could fit under consent. Sale of disposable surplus, that goes through our process internally, those could go unsent. Renewing contracts, you've had some discussion about renewing contracts. And so, you know, again, and that particular one, we kind of have it in a couple. If it's renewing a contract, we've done over and over, there's no substantial increase, we're not changing the scope of the contract, that might go under a consent. However, if it's a contract renewal and through negotiations, we've expanded the contract or we saw a huge price increase, 25%, whatever that number is, then we want to draw it to your attention and do a presentation. There are agreements, and you see I have agreements, could go under all three categories. Again, if it's a standard agreement, no substantive change, it could maybe go under consent if you wanted it to. If there is some change to it, but it's a continual agreement, then certainly, you know, that might go into immediate action because staff would do a presentation. And again, the parties would be here to answer your questions. And then under regular agenda would be possibly a new agreement, brand new, something different, never been done before, you may want to take, you know, two meetings to consider that agreement. Minutes could be under consent, expenditures could fit in any of the categories, again, depending on, you know, follow the procurement process, it is under budget, it's under a certain threshold, you know, it's routine expenditures. If it's a new expenditure, something new, it may go under immediate action, or if it's a certain dollar threshold, then you may certainly, you may want to put it under regular so that it takes two meetings to approve that. Warrant listing, you've seen those, we just did a couple of those this evening. Generally, they go under immediate action or consent. And then we also then have the prosecutors that we put under immediate action so it can be voted on individually. Time-sensitive items could be on any of these categories, depending on what the issue is. Ordinances, we've kind of put it under regular because, again, usually when you're doing an ordinance, you're making policy change. And so having two readings for that gives an opportunity to make sure the public is aware of that change. Board appointments, maybe something considered under immediate. Planning and zoning, no opposition, you all have already had some discussion about that, where those are under immediate action and can be approved that evening. And then there are those contested P and Z items, which would then go under a regular agenda and take two meetings. Expenditures above budget, certainly we would recommend those go under regular agenda so that we can provide information and talk to you about the expenditure and where the funding is going to come from. And then certainly any budget amendments that we do, any transfers from funds or make any changes from fund balance to, or utilizing, you know, certainly any reserves. So those are some topics, whether you like this or not, we, we're, we're fine with that. It's really whatever you want to do. We just tried to put some things in categories to help benefit your discussion this evening. And with that, I'll turn it over to the commissioner.
Thank you, Administrator. Commissioner Johnson, I think this was the subject that you had some interest in, so I'd like to go ahead and give you the first opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. So this really goes to government efficiencies in my mind, and I said it before, time is money. And we have, right now, we have approximately 25 people sitting in this room, all of them are on the county clock, all of them are getting paid by the county. They could be doing other things at this point or be off the clock. But it seems we've got to the point where it's almost like we have two meetings twice a month, in other words, we do the same meeting twice almost each month. It's interesting, the old, the old municipal code said that the county commission will hold sessions no less than twice monthly. That was it. What we've morphed into now, not morphed into, but what we've changed to now is we have essentially two business sessions, and this is what the ordinance has, it's, it's two business sessions and two study sessions. So you do study session and a business session, then a study session and a business session. And the way it's written, it, it makes some people uncomfortable in voting on things in the business session. They just want to wait for the, or I'm sorry, in the study session. They just want to wait for the business session. A perfect example of that is last week was a study session. And we talked about, on our consent calendar tonight is the approval of the, what is it? It's the, the internet service tonight. So we talked about that last week, everybody was on board with it, one commissioner, I think it was Commissioner, was it you?
It was me.
Yeah. Yeah, it's Commissioner Wagner. He didn't, he, he was not for it, he didn't want to vote for it last week. So one commissioner was able to hold this up for a whole week. And so this week, it was just on consent counter, there's no more questions about it, there's no more, nothing more to, to clarify anything. It was just, it was put on consent counter just to pass on consent. To me, that's silly. Doesn't make sense. It's silly that we do that, first of all, and it's also silly, I think, to me, that one commissioner can hold up the rest of the commission and get any things passed. So what I would like to see is the ordinance where it has a business session and a study session. I would like to see the study session and business session titles removed and just, we meet four times a month. Before, it used to be two. I say we meet four times, we're too big a city to, to wait just two times a month to vote on things and approve things. Not only for the community, but I think most of you know, I have a, I have a lot of compassion for the staff side of things, because I was on staff for 30 years in, in government when I had a real job. And so I have, I have some compassion for them and, and having to wait for boards and commissions to approve things. So my thought is we get rid of that language altogether, study session, business session, just say, hey, we're just meeting. And if there's something we can approve tonight, we'll approve it, we'll get it done by majority vote. And keep in mind that most of the things that we look at, they're noticed and they're on the internet the week in advance, so it's not new when we look at it. Now certainly, there's going to be some things that we don't want to take on right away. There may be some things introduced that night, whatever. There may be some things that we decide, hey, this is too important to, to rush through or to get it done, and we certainly need to, to make some, some accommodations for that. And I'm not saying we need to rush everything through, but there's some simple things, maybe procedural things, that things are just, don't need to take two meetings, particularly when we know we're going to vote on it, we know how we're going to vote, and we're just not going to vote until next week. Everyone's going to vote yes, but we're going to wait till next week to vote yes. That's silly. It just doesn't make sense. And I, I think you lose confidence from the community, from the, from the citizens, and that's why they, a lot of people don't like government because of our inefficiencies. And those are just silly things that we get wrapped up in. And I know we have a, a couple of commissioners here that spend some time at, at the state level, as state reps, and so it's different there. Because I know they look at things and they, they're looking at, at ordinances and different things that are hundreds of pages long, that you've got to review and you can't just have it thrown on you, you know, the day before and, okay, you're ready to, or that day and you're ready to vote. We don't generally have that issue here. Most of the things that we're looking at are very simple, very easy, hey, you know what, it's a, it's a printer, or it's a, it's an internet service. And we have the, we have the expert here to tell us all the details we need to know about it. We've got the information a week ahead of time, we can vote on that. So it's really about government efficiencies for me and, and just getting things done. And I think the way that it's written, and I don't want to speak for everybody else, but I think the way it's written now makes people uncomfortable voting during the study session because they think we have to wait until the business session do that. Even though the study sessions, the ordinance says we can vote in a study session, it has to be by unanimous vote, which I don't think is, I, I, I would like to get rid of that if my other commissioners would agree with that. I'd like to get rid of that and be able to vote every session, and it's not a study session, it's not, they're all business sessions, I guess, even if, if we have to even call that. Like I said, the old, the old ordinance didn't even call it a business or study session, it says that the county commission will hold sessions, that's it. So that's kind of the direction I would like to see. That's kind of my opinion, and I'll throw it back to you, presided commissioner, to see what everybody else.
Sure, thank you. I'm glad to hear that you, you are okay with the four times a month. I was here when it was moved to two times. There was a specific reason for that, was to stop public comment, plain and simple. That was the, that was the motivation.
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
No, we do not want to go back to those old days. We also, I, whether or not we have work or business sessions, I think is a legitimately a debatable point. I think we do need to have four times. I think there is a lot of value. I don't have a particular problem with the way this list is broken down, the one that says topic examples, but there have been times when things have been rushed through, when a majority was able to do that. I think having the ability to require unanimous votes keeps a single commissioner from being run over. For instance, with the example we just had tonight, we don't need to have a position of where one commissioner does not feel that they are having their ability to have their say and that they don't have the opportunity to explore an issue more deeply. That is important. The other thing that's important in my estimation is the public that we serve. They have jobs, they have lives, they don't, there are very few of them that are probably glued to their computers right now watching us or in rapt attention of our agendas as they go out. Sometimes they don't know about something that we're working on until we discuss it here and they see it, maybe they will review it, maybe somebody will tell them about it. The reason that we needed to retain some of these topics onto two nights or two meetings is because that gives these citizens the opportunity to actually see what we are doing. The fact that it might cost a little bit money, more money to do this, I, I, I think it's, the transparency and the, the involvement of citizens, I have a trouble putting too much, I, I don't think of that in terms of a factor of money. One observation that was made when we first moved to the arrangement we are in right now, 3 o'clock, 6 p.m. meetings, was that, well, that is inconvenient for staff, which I, I get that, also that there was a concern about, you know, how much money that would cost us. But by having two meetings that alternate 3 and 6 p.m. in my estimation, that means that people who have nine to five, literally nine to five jobs, have the opportunity to come before their government and to redress it for grievances, to use the phrase. Not everybody can make it at 3 p.m. Some people have jobs, some people have children, they have to shuttle to school and all the rest of it. By using that staggered meeting time with the combination of having the important issues go over two nights, means that citizens have the opportunity to weigh in on what they think and to be able to say their say. Because we, at the end of the day, we are not here to get through this stuff. We do want to obviously work as efficiently as possible, but that efficiency, I think, cannot be made at the expense of the ability for the people to, to talk to their government and to express their opinions. One of the reasons that this issue is, is a very big one to me, is that, you know, I remember when, when these things were taking place. And I don't, I don't want to go back there because we, we get a little more efficient, we get a little more efficient pretty soon. Public comments, well, you know, public comments are really kind of a long thing and they're a waste of time. We really don't need to do that, do we? Yeah, in my estimation, we absolutely need to have opportunity for the public to comment. So while I, I think that we should be looking for efficiencies, I don't think those efficiencies should be at the expense of the people we serve. So let me go ahead and give everybody else a chance, then I'll, I'll come back to you. And by the way, because this was your discussion, I, we will go through the discussion and I will certainly make a point of extending you the, the last word on this, Commissioner, if that sounds good. Commissioner Lawson.
We're having to share a speaker here. I think what Jay is really looking after, and I agree with him 1,000%, is plain old common sense. You know, there, there's going to be items on here that, that we all know, we don't need to hold over for another week. A great example to me was last evening when we had this meeting about the internet service. Why wait on that? We knew we were going to do it, the guy was here, made his presentation, then don't make him come back another week. That's, he's probably a salaried employee, but nevertheless, he has a life. So I, I just think it would have been nice to go ahead and approve that. If, and I agree with this document here... If, and I agree with this document here, that yes, if you've got a, some kind of a board, not, a P&amp;Z thing that's coming up, and it's in a neighborhood where there's huge properties, and all of a sudden, somebody wants to put 100 houses, you know, out there, yeah, we send letters out, and we notify these people, so people have the opportunity to come and voice their opinions. I think that's something we don't rush through, because I've had that experience, and we do want to give everybody a chance to talk about that. So for that part of it, it's great. But this stuff, on a lot of this, when we have somebody that's cutting their property in half, I like the suggestion that Jay made a couple times ago, and that was, why not let planning and zoning handle it right there in their office, don't even bring it before us? If it's simple, nobody complained. If nobody complained, they should be able to go ahead and get it approved, and not make people, well, that lady that had to pay 100 and some dollars a day, that was ridiculous to make that woman pay another, over $700, just for the, because we had to have it come back another week. So it's things of that nature, common sense, courtesy, and we need to weigh each one and weigh it well, but it would be nice if we had a document that said, if it's cut and dried, let P&amp;Z get it approved, don't bring it to us, don't bother us with it. If it's something that's hairy, then get that in here, let everybody voice their opinion, just take it on a case-by-case, but having to have everybody, hard enough to get three people to agree, let alone seven people to agree, is extremely difficult. So if you have your majority, that ought to be good enough. I don't know if it's in the, you know, some ruling that we have to be that way, but if we could cut some of that fat, and just get to the bottom line and get this stuff done, not that I want to rush through a meeting, I don't. I've been here since noon today, so I'm not in a rush to go somewhere. It's just that I like to keep it simple for the staff, keep it simple for taxpayers, that's all.
Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. I guess I'll start by saying, there's an old adage of, if it walks like a duck, if it quacks like a duck, if it swims like a duck, it's probably a duck. And I say that just from the observation that our colleague made in his opening remarks in that, whether it is a business session or a workshop, there are several things that walk and quack, and, you know, so on. Whether it is the immediate actions we may take, and consent agendas that we may take, so for the uninitiated, there is probably no real difference in what they see. And so I do tend to think that, you know, there's a reason, and I agree with the reasons why we do things at 3 o'clock and at 6 o'clock, but I also tend to understand the idea that there's very little difference in most people's eyes between what is workshop and what is business, when you can still do an action, do the business of the county. That being said, I think what I perceive, as we look at these various things, is the differences between policies, expenditures, and contracts, and each of them have a little bit different take to them. I certainly can understand the desire to accelerate things, and, you know, I'll just point out to this body that you'll see probably many more silly things from me over the next several years, but one of the things that I do believe in is that there should always be very clear direction to staff, because although I don't want them to have to stay here any longer than they have to, the fact of the matter is, they're going to probably be here every single week. I am not giving them a vacation if I dispose of something today or next week, unless you have a vacation, in which case, please feel free to take it. But I would say that there, that the forms that I looked at last week, which as I mentioned was the reason why I voted no, was we are sending a message that we have an interest in accelerating matters, however, the infrastructure that is guided by, or given to staff, is contrary to that. And what I mean by that is, it says, "When do you want to come up here? Here's your workshop date, here's your business session date." The value of this conversation this evening is that I am hopeful that we provide the clear direction that then supports exactly what you're talking about doing. The unfortunate thing about government is, it's process-driven. It must be for everyone to have the very same opportunity that anyone else has in front of the legislative body. That was why I was silly last week, I'll come up with another reason next week. But my feeling here, then, is that if there is a reason for accelerating something, that that be made very clear in the presentation that comes before us, that the documentation that comes before us, just as we have asked for it from Kip and his team, and not that I'm suggesting everybody needs to have those blinds moved like, anyway, I'm digressing, but that it is very clear as to why is an acceleration okay? Why can we take it on this week? Just as we have asked for it from one department, we should ask for that same from the others. You know, one of those reasons could be, frankly, why I voted for the RICO copiers, the sooner we vote for this, the sooner those copiers come in. The reason why, just by virtue of comparison, the reason why I voted against accelerating the issue for the law, the split, from the young lady who was here about splitting her property, was because it didn't matter what we did, she was going to pay that anyway, because she did not have another closing date. So whether we did it that day or another, she was still going to pay that, yet, so in my mind, what's the reason to accelerate it? Other than, okay, she doesn't have to come for another meeting, but there is no emergency there that requires us to do it. If we want to, okay. So to make it very clear as to what constitutes a reason to accelerate something, making that reason very clear, then I think informs staff of why you should be able to ask for that, and that should also inform us as to then, why should we grant that? The last thing I'll mention, probably, yeah, for the moment, I was going to say, well, for the moment, is I do notice something that has done tonight that I think can be very valuable, and that is, when we have a discussion item that explains to us property and casualty insurance, and what's going to happen in that renewal, then it is already a presentation that's been done. When you bring it forward, in my opinion, we have had a public discussion of what this is. For whatever reason, there is no ordinance associated with it this evening, but I just make the observation that we have utilized discussion items in such a way to inform us of what may happen from a future request that comes from the body. I would encourage its use, it may actually make future discussions much, much easier and much, much faster. But I will stop there, you all have indulged me enough for the moment, and I yield.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, you know, as you all know, I've kind of brought up this conversation a few times at the past meetings, and I've actually appreciated the discussions on it. I just think, at the end of the day, we come up with a framework, and then we follow the framework. I don't think that it's too terribly important exactly what the framework is, but I do think it is terribly important that we follow it once we've got it. You know, I certainly sympathize with, you know, the issues around efficiency, and not just kicking thing another week if we already know what we're going to do, that kind of thing, and I do think potentially, there's a remedy to that. What I don't support is having a framework in place in which we have a work session and a business session, and in which we have, in the ordinance, a first-read, second-read concept, in which everything on the regular agenda is intended to be first-read at work session, and then second-read and vote at business session, and then we just choose not to do it every week. That's where my issue lies. And so, you know, Commissioner Wagner provided a lot of detail in terms of trying to create standards around when we would accelerate, and when we wouldn't. And I, you know, I think that is one way to go with this. What I hear Jay proposing is that we just scrap the business session, work session model altogether, and the first-read, second-read model altogether, and just treat each meeting as a business session, and I think that's a reasonable proposal. Frankly, that's what we've been doing mostly anyway. And so I think we just need to choose, I guess is my point. If we're going to keep doing that every week, in the name of efficiency, et cetera, then I think we need to change our governing documents to reflect that as how we can operate, and just have four regular meetings every week. But I do think we need to choose, and I think hopefully, we can do that as part of this discussion, and if somebody has any, you know, sort of concrete proposals they want to make in terms of how we go forward, I think now would be a good time to say them loud, I think you've started that conversation. But yeah, that's, at the end of the day, I don't think, you know, it's all going to be fine, whichever way we do it, let's just pick a way, and then stick to it. That's my idea. Thanks.
Commissioner Withington.
Yeah, hey, I just want to say, I support Commissioner Johnson's treating everything as a business session, I think it'd speed up, not necessarily just speed up everything, but to be more efficient, and I think, I would like to see us put in a rule that would stop us from doing what you said they do in Kansas City, of introducing something that day and passing it that day, unless it's, you know, a huge emergency, like a natural disaster or something. But I do think we should treat everything as a business session. That's just where I'm at, but I would never vote to get rid of public comments, I don't think anybody up here has the courage, Jerry, to get rid of public comments, I think people would revolt, so, like they did the last time. But no, I think we should, but I would like to see something put in place that says, you can't introduce something that day and pass it that day.
Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you, and on that note, if I can interject, there is language that Kansas City uses where it calls out, what are those emergencies? That is certainly available to us, it's very specific, things like, you know, elections, natural disasters, things that are very acute sorts of emergencies, so that language, and I'm sure others have it, and I'm sure the county councillor can get all kinds of great language for that kind of thing.
It's mostly government session.
Well, yeah, right, but I mean, just as far as, I think what I'm hearing is, a directive of, here are the kinds of things that we consider emergencies, right? Which then allows for that legislative action to take place, I think is where he's going with that, so that's pretty easy. What I might suggest, then, is, again, I go back to what is provided to staff, and currently, as it sits, and you can find the example here in the agenda, it lists a request for both a workshop date and a business session date. If indeed, we are interested in kind of treating all meetings the same way, then you would simply just, on that, on that, just ask when it needs to be introduced, and then from that single date, then it gets propagated however the body wants to move forward with it. So I just suggest that, just to remind everyone that whatever we want to do, then has to be propagated by staff, and our administrator gives her staff, you know, here's the thing you got to fill out, so I just want it to be consistent. Whatever we say we want, it has to be consistent with what she provides, so.
Certainly, you know, the form is the form, you know, whatever direction you all give us, we can modify the form to make sure we're clear to the public on what they can expect on a particular item or topic, and what that means. But it also helps staff that we could get some kind of guidance, because as Commissioner Wagner and I were talking a little bit earlier, you know, whatever the decision is, we factor that into what we need, right? So if we need you all to approve a contract, and we think in your direction is it's going to take two meetings, then we need to know that, and back it in to build it into our timetable, unless there is an exception, or, you know, if there's some kind of guidance where that might be acceptable for first reading. So whatever the outcome is, we just would like to know so that we could plan to ensure that we meet the timetables that we need to meet the timetables, you know, to conduct business and serve our citizens.
Commissioner Lawson.
So the only thing I'd like to see is, then, is what do we, steps do we need to take to do, like Commissioner Carpenter said, let's put some ground rules down, or alter rules, so that, something we can all agree on, so if it's an emergency, or not maybe emergency, but common sense says, go ahead and approve it, we can do that without making anybody feel like we're doing something underhanded. And then, if it's something that's an emergency, we go ahead and we wait for another, or not an emergency, but important enough, we wait till another week. Can we get some kind of a guideline started and make those changes? So, you know, we have something in black and white that we can call on, and, you know, we can say, "Jay, you're out of order, and we can't do it that way because this is the new rule." But just go ahead and get something down on paper, how do we go about getting that accomplished?
Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. I think to that point, I tend to go back to what we asked Kip to do, with, you know, he, the staff, came forward with, here is when we're going to recommend that you vote for this today. And it would seem to me that it would not be too difficult to request staff to come up with something similar, not to belabor the discussion, or make the discussion go on endlessly, but my sense was, we seemed to be pretty pleased with what we did in that area, and it seems to me, it wouldn't be too arduous to maybe come to figure out what that is, because it seems to me that if staff is recommending, like we had last week, you know, two instances where this is a no-brainer, well, the only thing we really didn't hear was, we recommend that you go ahead and pass this today. And that may be, you know, too easy of a way to look at it, but at least it seems to me that it worked in one instance, is there any reason why it would not work in other instances? I'll just throw that out for discussion purposes.
Okay. I think it's good we're having this discussion, because over the past several weeks, we've been almost operating without rules. We've suspended rules on a frequent basis, and there is no framework, and there's no way for anyone to track what we were doing. We need to come to some agreement on how we go about these rules. Something else that has not come up as far as the two-step process, and that is this, and it could absolutely come up if there is a proposal that comes out of this discussion to change our ordinance, it is absolutely within the realm of possibility, because it's happened before, and that is that there may be amendments made. Sometimes those amendments are made for a technical reason, sometimes they're made for policy reasons, but the thing is, if we have X ordinance before us on a given evening, and there are amendments made, that, those are made essentially spontaneously. We go back to our Jefferson City experiences, and during my time down there, the rules change every two years down there, but it prohibited the use of spontaneous amendments voted on at that time, they had to be submitted in advance. But the point is this, if we have, say, something that is along these lines, and there are amendments made, that means that we will have to make a vote on those at that evening, so, without any contemplation. I don't know anybody who's ever proposed legislation, or ordinance, or whatever, that has, not from time to time, ended up having someone make a suggestion to change, I know it's happened to me, and my reaction has been, thank God, somebody saw that, I didn't see that one coming. Because we are all human, we cannot foresee all ends, is a reason that we are called a deliberative body, and that is because we are to deliberate over these especially serious items. So from that point of view, I think we should also consider the impact of any changes we make on potential amendments. I can see where we might want to, outside of, you know, maybe raising the bar to where it would be a unanimous thing on the second reading, so if we had first reading and had amendments made, then when we take it up at a subsequent meeting, no more amendments, because then they become spontaneous amendments, which put- put other commissioners at a disadvantage when they're trying to vote, with the exception of something that would be unanimous, like a typo, something that would be a consensus kind of a thing. I will repeat it again, the idea of the unanimous quality to some of these is important. I spent some years being run over, and I would not see any member of this board, any member of this commission be run over, not on my watch. Commissioner Lawson had her concerns about a particular item on tonight's agenda. It is absolutely appropriate, and it is absolutely important that her opinion and that her ability to slow it down and say, no, no, let's think about this a little more. Any commissioner can move to have things done, and I think any commissioner should have the ability, within reason, to slow things down. Not to block, but to say, let's just take a moment and think about it. That is absolutely not only legitimate, but desirable. The last thing I want to talk about before, unless there's further comments, I'll recognize Commissioner Johnson, and that is, when we take important issues, and if we decide them in a single evening, we have just cut in half the ability for our constituents to express their opinions. We have stifled their voice. And even more to the point, if they were not, again, if they had their lives to lead, and they had their jobs to do, their kids to raise, and they did not become aware of an issue that was important to them, and I think that's the phrase we should keep in mind, important to them. We may all agree that something is, oh, this is not important, this is trivial. We have to be thinking in terms of what is important to the people who entrusted with this power. Not so much that it's, we should be, it's not so much a matter of gratitude for them voting for us. It is the responsibility, they have entrusted us with a certain degree of control. That control must be exercised in a way that is most responsive to what citizens would like. So, again, the process I think we are embarked on would be one where we would have a proposed change come before us, we would work through it and see what, you know, what the consensus of the commission was. Commissioner Withington.
So last week, it was kind of insinuated that we were violating the rules or going against the rules. Today, it was said that we were operating without the rules. I just want to make a point that I think we were definitely, we have been operating under the rules. No one has broken any rules. For work session, it's, there's nothing that says the word emergency. And it says, a matter may be considered and approved during a work session only if that matter is approved unanimously by all voting commissioners. So I think we need to stop saying that we're not operating within the rules, because we clearly are operating within the rules. If it's not unanimous, it gets moved to the next week. So I think that might send a wrong message to our constituents. So I just wanted to be clear that we have been operating under rules. We have been playing by the rules that are in this ordinance. So I just want it to stop being said that we aren't operating under the rules that we currently are governed by.
Thank you. Any further comments before I go to Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Lawson?
I just want to go on the record, I don't think that any of us sitting up here ever want to shortchange our constituents. I think when I've spoken against something, my whole thought process has always been, how does it affect the people that put me in office? I take that extremely seriously. And I think every one of us up here is the same way. That we know we've been given an approval by the people of Clay County, and we're going to continue to fight for what we feel is right for them. You know, I don't want to rush through things. That's not my focus. I'm just saying, I'd love to see some common sense used in some instances where we can say, oh, it's very simple, no one has come up and complained about this, and in an instance where it is a planning and zoning, those poor fools have been fighting that for two months before they come before us sometimes. So it's not like every one of their neighbors and they have fought the fight to get finally here and get the darn thing approved. And we've got a great planning and zoning person who is very mindful about these things. And I think if he feels that there's no reason why we can't go ahead and approve this, and it comes before us, meeting one, and he says, guys, it's okay, nobody's fighting it, we could go ahead and approve it. And it bothers me that anyone would ever think that any of us would not put the people first. That's what the heck I'm trying to do. Put the people first, what Jay's trying to do, what Jason's talking about. We're trying to put their needs and their gasoline that cost them over $3 to come up here twice when they can do it once. If there's issues, then I'm going to be the first person that says, no, we're going to hold this over, give more people a chance to come talk about it. But I want to be on record saying that I would never not consider my constituents, which is the entire county, would never not consider their needs, their wants, or give them the opportunity to speak their mind.
Any other comments before we go to Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Commissioner. Just in case, because it sounds like you want to go to Commissioner Johnson, then wrap up the discussion, which is perfectly fine.
Yes, that's where I have mine, yes.
If that's what we're going to do, I'll say one last thing, which is, I don't think we've actually resolved the issue in this discussion yet. And those issues are, are we scrapping the work session, business session model? And I actually agree with Commissioner Withington, no rules were violated. You know, a unanimous vote allows us to bypass the second read. That's absolutely true. But the framework, the concept, is a concept of regular agenda, one week, vote on the second week, and to constantly be diverting from that is within the rules, but it's not within sort of the spirit of the rules, I guess is what I would say. And so if we're going to move to voting on things every week, I think, you know, that's what the proposal from Commissioner Johnson seems to be, you know, to move to every session via business session. And I think there are questions around that, versus sort of a more, what Commissioner Wagner has been suggesting, which is, let's just create more defined understanding of when something would be accelerated versus not. But those are two different paths. I think we need to decide which one we're going to do. And maybe you're going to speak to that, but if you're going to, if that's going to be the end of the discussion, I figured I might as well chime in now. And then we need to decide whether or not something requires a unanimous vote to do, to vote the same day that we hear it. What I heard Commissioner Johnson say was that one commissioner ought not be able to hold it up if it's a majority, that it ought to pass that day. Commissioner Nolte is saying that he doesn't support that, that any one commissioner should be able to delay it a week. That's a difference of opinion. I think we ought to resolve the difference of opinion and create a rule that we then So I want us to answer those questions. We don't have to do it tonight, we can have another discussion at next week's meeting, that's fine. But I think we need to answer those questions. Are we scrapping the work session, business session, first read, second read model? Yes or no? And then are we requiring a unanimous vote to pass something on first read, which would perhaps be answered, you know, by that first question? But I think we ought to try to get answers to those, is my view.
Thank you. Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. The comments, the last couple of comments have just kind of struck me to remind people that many times in these jobs, you are trying to battle the last war, you are trying to deal with the last war you were in. And what I mean by that is, you know, as I come into this, I did not have the issues of the years prior to that. But it was those very things that helped precipitate the very reason why a new constitution passed and why four of us are here now, right? You're always trying to fix that thing. And so I think what the question is, are those things an issue anymore? And if they are, to what degree are they? And I think our colleague, Commissioner Carpenter, has kind of set what I think are various directions. I might argue that there might be ways of melding those two positions together. But what I might suggest, because I know our staff takes dutiful notes of everything that has been said here, that this is not quite unlike what we experienced in our budget conversation, right? We had areas of agreement and areas of difference. And it was those areas of difference that were then put before the group the week before we were to vote on a budget, and kind of taking the up and down of, based on this issue, this is the direction that most of us or all of us want to go, and so on and so forth. And I might make a suggestion that, although, you know, I'm good for an all-nighter, but others may not be. And so I wonder if those key issues that were just mentioned are things that we can put out there in such a way, where maybe it's easy enough to discuss them tonight, or maybe it's worth having the follow-up of that discussion next week. But it just seems to me that you are right, there's kind of these things that are floating. And I'm a big believer in clear direction to the staff, so I might just say, you know, if we know what those issues are, or certainly after our colleague is done, I would like to hear what staff thinks the issues are that we've talked about, those areas of difference, and maybe that suggests how we get to resolving those things. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
In the spirit of your all-nighter comment, I just want to say, I'll hand you the gavel and you just have yourself a slumber party.
Pepsi's coming and I'll be around, so.
Any other comments before I go to Commissioner Johnson?
The only thing I want to comment is that, once again, this is decidedly different than the way this body used to do business some years ago. We can have these kind of discussions, and we can have distinct disagreements of opinion, but I think that what we have done tonight is a constructive exercise in how it is that we want to go forward as a group, as a body with that. Commissioner Johnson, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir, and I appreciate the conversation. First off, I want to underscore what Commissioner Withington and Commissioner Carpenter talked about, and that is, as far as violating the rules or anything that we haven't, Commissioner Nolte said, quote, "The rules have been suspended." Suspended rules, almost like we've been rogue this last couple of months. We haven't. To be clear, we have not violated a single ordinance, a single policy. Our county council is right here at the desk every week we're here. He guides us along the way. If we would have done anything illegal, I'm sure he would have heard it. We have not done anything illegal, we have not suspended any rules, we have not gone rogue. What we might have done is things that you're not used to doing, and maybe not past practice the way you used to do it, and what Commissioner Carpenter said is true. The way the ordinance is written now, it makes it look like, okay, we talk about them one day, we vote on them on the next week. That's not what it says, but it kind of insinuates that if you read it. But bottom line, it says if it's unanimous, you could vote on it that week. That's what we've been doing in several instances. So first of all, we haven't suspended any rules, we haven't broken any rules, we haven't violated any ordinance, we haven't gone rogue. We're following the rules. A couple of things that were mentioned, first of all, the number of meetings, I'm not proposing that we change the number of meetings at all. Matter of fact, I think we need to meet at least four times a month. I think we're too big of a county not to. There's decisions that need to be made, and I think waiting just every other week to make a decision is not good for the citizens or for the staff. I do not in any way mean to limit public comment by this, and there was never any indication for me that I tend to limit public comment. Matter of fact, I'll be the last person here that would ever want to limit public comment. I'll be here all night if people want to comment. That's not what we want to do. Matter of fact, some of us ran on that, because we think transparency, public comment, those kind of things are very, very important. So this has nothing to do with that whatsoever. I think what we're seeing is, and I don't want to offend anybody by saying this, but there are some people, both on staff and on the commission, who went through a pretty rough time in this county. And there's a little bit of PTSD that's involved with that. And this isn't then. This is different. We have a whole new constitution. We have seven people up here, which changes things dynamically. First of all, understand that everything that we looked at tonight, everything we looked at every week, we get that the week ahead of time. Now, when do we get it? Everybody gets it who wants it. It's posted online, so it's a week ahead of time that everybody gets it. Before, there was three eyes looking at it. Now there's seven eyes that look at it for the whole week before, before we've even come and meet here. So it's not anything like it used to be. And I realize some people went through some tough times, and it's one of the reasons why some of us even ran. And I watched actually Commissioner Nolte maneuver some very difficult situations, and I appreciate what he did. But nonetheless, it's different now. And we got to get past the PTSD that those of us, those even had from the past. We're not there anymore. We're beyond that. We're moving way beyond that. So to think that he was going to limit public comment, no. Think he was going to rush things through to try and limit either public comment or to sneak things through? No. That's not happening. That's just not how this commission is going to work. So we need to get that off the table right now. Also, the idea that it was shifted to four meetings a month, 3:00, 6:00, rotating, is so that people can come, and people that work certain hours can come to some of these. Well, if you keep it that way, the people that can come to the business sessions can only come to business sessions, they can't come to the work study sessions. And people that come to the work study sessions can't come to the business sessions, because that's their schedule. If we change this so that they're all business sessions, they're all just meetings, then they have the opportunity, depending on, doesn't matter what their schedule is, they can come to the 3:00 or the 6:00, they're all going to be business meetings. It keeps coming up about clear direction for staff. Here's a clear direction for staff. We meet every Wednesday. If you have something to bring to the commission, you take it to the county administrator, and you get on the agenda the week before. That's clear direction. That's as simple as you can get. If you, if staff has something that needs to be approved by this commission, you have, every week, that can come before us. You just need to get it in a week ahead of time through the proper channels, and it's posted a week ahead of time so that we can now make a decision on it. It's that simple. The clear direction to staff, I don't understand why it's so difficult. I think it muddies the water now, the way we do things for staff. But bottom line, if you need some internet, an internet contract approved, well, I'll tell you what. Let her know, let the county administrator know this week, and we'll have it on next week, we'll have it on the agenda for the next go-around. It's that simple. That's how clear the direction is. Whenever we meet, you can bring stuff to us. I don't think we can over, we should overcomplicate that. You just bring it to us when you're ready for us to prove it or deny it. One comment that was made about, Commissioner Lawson talked about, the woman that was here trying to get some stuff done, and we put it off for no reason but just to put it off that we didn't have to, and it cost her $100 a day. Commissioner Wagner said it did not cost her $100. It would have cost her $100 a day anyway, because she had no closing date. That's not true. She didn't have a closing date because of us. Yeah, she couldn't have, she couldn't get the closing date because of us, because we couldn't make a decision. And she was, remember, she started this process long before we were even on the commission. So that was a problem. And there's no reason for us to delay it. There was no reason. That was just silly kiss-the-ring attitude kind of thing that we were doing. It's like, you know what? If we know we're going to vote on it, let's do it. We keep talking about accelerating things. I don't see this as accelerating things. I see this as, stop decelerating things. Stop slowing things down. It's like we're putting the brakes on things when we don't need to. We put the brakes on this internet thing. We don't need to do that. There's no reason to put the brakes on that. There's nobody that had a concern about that. Nobody whatsoever. And they've had two weeks to talk about it. So we're slowing things down that we don't need to, and that's really where I'm at. It's like, instead of, hey, let's have a reason to speed it up, no, let's have a reason to slow it down. If we don't have a reason to slow it down, let's get it done. That's kind of my attitude with this stuff. And I think we, that's government, the problem with government is we just move too slow. We don't want to get things done. And that's where I'd like to see more efficiencies in getting things done. There are certain things that have to have two readings. If that's the case, then we have two readings. We can't get it done the first day. But if there's a certain ordinance, if they're, to pass an ordinance that needs to have two readings, well, then we'll have two readings. It's that simple. We don't get it done the first week. But most things don't have that issue. I would like to see us get rid of this unanimous vote thing to have it pass the first week. I think that's ridiculous, because then we have issues like we've been talking about. And it's just, if it's a business session every week, or just a meeting every week where we can get things done, it's not in the guise of, hey, this is, we're here for studying things. It's, no, we're here to get work done. We're here to pass it, and we're here to move this county forward. And if there is an issue that needs to be studied in detail, we can call another meeting for that. We can always call another meeting, say, you know, we're going to have a study session, a separate study session to study whatever issue it is, and we're all going to come together, we're going to notice it, we're not going to even vote on anything, we're going to study this matter out, because it's a big issue. And we can always do that. But for the most part, we don't have too many things that need a whole lot of studying. Usually, if I get it the week before and I look it on my computer at home... home, I'm good to go in about 30 minutes, I pretty much know everything that's on the agenda and, and how I'm going to vote, for the most part, unless there's more information that I need to get, and I'll ask that here for clarifying questions. Most of it's pretty simple stuff, pretty basic stuff. You're not seeing the stuff that you, that you saw in Jefferson City where you're getting, you know, 200 pages this morning, we're going to vote this afternoon. We're not getting that. And certainly if we got something like that, that'd be a little bit different. So my suggestion, and I think it'd be clear to staff and everybody else, is that we make this so we meet three, four times a month, same hour, same times we are now, but we're allowed to vote on everything every time we're here. And if it just, i- if we're giving it to us the week before, and now we're talking about it, and we all agree, instead of putting on consent for next week, and that's just saying, yeah, we're going to vote on yes next week, let's vote on yes this week. Certain things we can't do that to, I understand that, but the majority of things we probably can. And we're in the 21st century now, everybody has access to all this information. It's not like we, they have to, and if you look at the stats, there's not a whole lot of people tuning into these meetings. So we're not hiding stuff from anybody, we're more transparent than we've ever been before, ever, in this county. And that's a big push, right? A lot of people up here and a lot of people sitting out there. And so to be concerned about, hey, we're not transparent enough, we're not giving people enough input, not enough people, time to talk about things, yeah, we are. Yeah, we are, there's plenty of time, and if there's ever an issue that we think that somebody needs some more time to talk about, whether it's a commission, or it's, or it's someone from the public, we'll, we'll make more time. It's that simple. Nobody's trying to rush anything through, and, and that might have happened in the past. I don't think you see that from anybody on this commission right now. We're not trying to rush things through to, to, to slide them under the radar, or to do things, you know, nefariously, that's, that's just not, that's just not what we're about. And we're open about it, and you have something, we're going to post it the week before, everyone's going to see it, and then we'll come before us, we'll vote on it. We have clarifying questions, we'll ask them, if we know we're going to vote, we'll vote on it. And majority wins. That's my suggestion.
That concludes our discussion items this evening. That brings us to county administrator comments. Commissioner, excuse me, administrator? I don't know whether I promoted you or demoted you just then.
Okay, so the next meeting of the commission is next Wednesday, March 1st, at 3:00. And also wanted to remind the commission, you should have received an email with some dates for the strategic planning session. So if you could get back with us by March 3rd, what dates will wa, will work for all of you? We'll try and pick a date that everyone is at, and then we'll move to other individuals, and it's a little bit of herding cats with a big group, but we want to make sure that a date works for all of you, so, that's all I have.
Thank you. Now, commissioner comments, Commissioner Whittington? Commissioner Lawson? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. I, I was not going to, but I do have to take one issue of what I heard, and I will take issue because it suggests I don't know what I'm talking about. And that is, when I made the suggestion to the person that was here about getting a, getting their closing date, in my past elected life, I probably voted on more Platts, more developments than I care to count, and many of them were lined up with when the, a, a deal was going to close, or a property was going to close. I don't know who represented that individual who was with us, but what I suggested happens a lot in this region. And you'll forgive me, but when someone tells me that I didn't know what I know, I have to remind them I am experienced in what I suggested. And I would hope that if I do so in the future, that it does not come out of ignorance, but comes from the experience that I bring here. Otherwise, I hope everyone has a good weekend, and I appreciate everything that the staff is doing. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No comments, thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Thompson?
No comments this week.
Commissioner Johnson?
Just for the record, she was the realtor.
The attorney.
Gentlemen, this is for comments, debate would be out of order, so commissioners are during this time free to make whatever comments, but interaction is probably going to not be in line, in, in order. With that, I will go ahead and have no comments myself, and we are adjourned. Thank you.